Hello and welcome to South Salt Lake City Council Regular Meeting. It is Wednesday, July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's currently seven P M. I want to welcome the residents and city staff, mayor, and fellow council members for being here tonight. My name is Leanne Huff. I represent District One and will be conducting. Also, I want to thank our Sergeant, Sergeant Arms for being here. And we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Clarissa, please.
Okay, would you please stand for the pledge?
Thank you, Clarissa. Now we'll move on to approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as listed on the agenda. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Sharla, a second by Clarissa. All in favor?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to no action comments, starting with scheduling.
Yes, thank you. Some events coming up in the city on Saturday, August second, second is a puncture vine pole along the Jordan River Trail. This will be with the city, the Jordan River Commission, and the Utah Hoagol Zoo to clean up the puncture vine along the Jordan River. They will be mainly focusing in South Salt Lake and the Mill Creek Confluence. Tools and bags will be provided for that event. You can find more information on the city's website. And then on Friday, August first, is Movies in the Park. This one will be Kung-Fu Panda. Some pre-show activities are Master Liu Demonstration and a Brazilian martial arts performance at seven P M. And this will be at the Central Park Community Center. So the activities will begin at seven and the movies will start at dusk. And as a reminder, no dogs are allowed on the lawn at Central Park. So please leave your dogs at home for that event. And then on August seventh, from four-thirty to six-thirty, at the South Salt Lake Police Department is the Badges and Brats Event. You can join the South Salt Lake Police Department and visit with our officers. And again, that's on the seventh from four-thirty to six-thirty. And then just a reminder that city offices are closed tomorrow for the twenty-fourth. And then our next city council meeting will be on August thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel. Now we'll move on to public comments. If anyone would like to come up and give public comment, we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and where you're from, and you you get three minutes.
I I was just wondering if you could repeat the details of the brat event?
It is on, let's see, August seventh, from four-thirty to six-thirty at the South Salt Lake Police Department.
August seventh, four-thirty to six-thirty at S S L P.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing no one else come up, we will close the public meeting and move on to mayor comments.
Thank you. Just a reminder, earlier this year, we partnered with One Kind Act Today Organization through Proclamation. And the first thing that we've been rolling out is South Salt Lake Kindness in Action Spotlight. We have that monthly. We had our very first one with Deidre Rue, who is our Dedicated Secretary for Code Enforcement Team. If you ever walk around City Hall and see little ducks, colored ducks, some have Santa hats on them, just placed in different spots or a little inspirational cards. She's kind of behind that, and so it's just like really picked up the spirit of City Hall and has had a ripple effect through City Hall. So she was selected to be our first highlight or spotlight for this. And just wanted to highlight her in council meeting. You may have caught a news story about daytime watering restrictions that Fox thirteen did. Just a reminder that there's no outdoor watering between ten A M. Six P M. Code enforcement is really out just doing information education right now. And that if we also, just a reminder about Utah Water Savers Rebates for replacing traditional grass with plants drip irrigation is utawater savers dot com. And then we've also added that to our South Salt Lake Beautiful Yard Award. We received water conservation grant funds to highlight the Beautiful Yard Award. So if you are chosen, if nominated and then chosen, you get three hundred dollars toward garden equipment and plants. And you can nominate yourself or somebody in your neighborhood on our website at s s L C dot gov. And we just rolled out a new app, Eye on Water, I E Y E instead of I, letter I. But it helps you track your water use. And so you'll see social media posts and information on our website as well on that. And we're just really trying to help our residents conserve. Last thing, first of the month, I was invited to go back to Harvard Kennedy School of Business to present to other mayors throughout the country on Promise South Salt Lake and our Cradle to Career Pipeline that we've created here. I was honored to go back with Bill Krem from United Way and share what we as a community have created for our community and just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mayor. Move on to city attorney comments. None? Okay, city council comments, starting with Paul.
Thank you, Leanne. So tomorrow we celebrate Pioneer Day. And I think it's a time to honor strength, the sacrifice, and the spirit of those who helped shape our state. And let's just remember their legacy and continue working together to build a more inclusive and resilient community for everyone.
Great. Thank you, Paul. And Ray?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
I have nothing. Nothing is wrong.
Okay, great. Now we'll move on to action items and appointment by mayor.
I'm just presenting Brandon DeGaffanry to council to be moved from a civilian review board alternate to a regular, not a regular serving, but a regular member of the civilian review board.
Do you guys, anyone have questions for him? Okay. Advice and can I get a motion for advice and consent?
I'll make a motion that we give the mayor advice and consent for Brandon DeGaffanry to be a civilian review board regular member. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Sharla and a second by Clarissa. All in favor or rebar call? We'll start with Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And now we will move on to unfinished business. Item number one, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council enacting chapter twelve point three zero of the South Salt Lake Municipal Code, creating a transportation utility, implementing a transportation utility fees, and establishing a transportation utility enterprise fund. We have Craig. Giles is going to speak on this.
As Craig gets set up, I just want to point out that item one and two are connected. So item one will be the framework that authorizes and enacts the transportation utility fee. And item number two is what sets the fee in the fee schedule, just for the council's information.
Okay, thank you.
Not functioning. I really wanted my PowerPoints. Last time I noticed, there was a bright spot coming here. And I went home and checked, and someone had rubbed some of my hair off.
Well, Craig's getting set up. Can you remind me the date, the meeting when we first got this presentation? Does anyone remember?
I don't remember which one.
Second meeting in June. Did we have two meetings in June?
We had one meeting in June. So we discussed it when the budget, during the budget process, because you created a fund
Yeah.
to receive the money that would be collected through this transportation utility fee. It was discussed then. I don't know if it was discussed prior to the budget process. I don't believe it was.
Second meeting in May. Okay.
And then we just had the one in June.
I was just trying to find my notes on it from the first time, so thank you.
Okay, so we have two ordinances, and if you're okay with that, I'm just gonna talk about them both together. So the first one, the overview and the purpose of the ordinances to the transportation utility fee ordinance establish a dedicated funding mechanism to maintain, operate, and improve the city streets and related infrastructure. It recognizes the public benefit and shared responsibility for maintaining safe, functional roadways for all users, residents, businesses, and visitors. And lastly, it enacts, as Josh said, section or chapter twelve point three zero of our municipal code. The key elements of the ordinance, and these are in Exhibit A of the ordinance. It defines the policy and purpose, the definitions and categories of the fees. It creates the transportation utility fee and fund, sets the user fee structure, billing the collections, oversight and transparency, or the reporting, and severability. So I just want to point out, what has we've discussed this, and you'll see the second ordinance is essentially just amending our fees in chapter three dot eleven dot one hundred of the municipal code and adding subsection G for the transportation, transitivity utility fee. And you'll notice that residential, single-family and residential multifamily, less than fifty units is exempted. And it also exempts places of worship, and that's defined in the ordinance. That's it. Any questions?
Craig, do you happen to know how many over fifty residential properties we have?
I do not. I know. We could pull that.
Just curious. Okay.
Okay, so I do have a question. So for item number one in our drive, it on twelve dot thirty dot zero four zero E, it does say exemptions, transportation utility fee shall not be assessed by the city against places of worship or against residential users. Isn't that kind of in conflict with the table in?
Part of the definition clarifies that. So residential user would include, sorry, if we pulled up the
The definition.
Yeah, if you look at the definitions for what residential user means, it 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 matches the breakdown that we do on the chart. So it excludes the fifty and over.
Thank you for clarifying that. I just want to go on record that I I think I would need more information to look at the fifty or over. I'm kind of not comfortable with it because a lot of our apartments are older units and, you know, fifty. For example, we have people up here that are in a hundred plus, right, and they're older buildings. And I'm, my concern is that landlords are going to pass that on and use that as an opportunity to bump up rents for people who are already struggling. I did have one idea. I'm wondering if a lot of our new projects that we're seeing coming in are actually that mixed use, right? The commercial and the residential. Could we just say those kind of developments? I don't know if anyone else on the council has thoughts about that.
I'm looking at the lawyer. I don't know.
Whatever, whatever you decide to do as a, as a policy decision, obviously, that's within your parameters. It would just need to be something we can clearly define, which is what this, this draft was attempting to do. Clearly define something that would include higher traffic, locations that were still residential in in part, but also as we move to our downtown areas where there are going to be a lot more of that mixed use. So if that's the approach that the council would like, obviously, we can, we can draft it that way and see how that works. And how it feels when we look at the draft and all those things and talk about what, where that breakdown is and how we feel about making that the bright line. Totally your decision, something that you guys can do. This was just an approach to try and still capture the higher traffic without penalizing the the lower traffic residential locations.
Josh, real quick follow-up question. Right now, we have some of those mixed, right, the commercial and then the residential. So in the current way it's written, is it, how, how does it fit? So is the commercial, the commercial, the business part, you just look at the amount of square feet?
Yeah, so if it's a, if it's classified as a retail or commercial space or an industrial space, it pays, you know, if you pulled up that chart, you'll, you'll see the rate per thousand square feet is the way it's broken down. So you'll, you'll see how that's classified, and that's how it would be essentially right now broken down. You know, where the rubber hits the road when we come to actually utility billing. You know, that's, we wanted to make this something that we could implement in, in finance when they're doing the utility billing, that they could implement it with, with as little hiccups as, as possible and be able to answer questions from residents or from those that are paying, so.
Great pun, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I caught that. His pun, when the rubber hits the road on the transportation fund.
I appreciate.
Yeah, I picked it up. Josh, I got it. I, so hypothetically, Craig, can you pull that table back up by chance? On units residential fifty or over, thousand square feet, two seventy-nine, I think it was, was the cost. I'm guessing most units in a fifty-plus residential development are probably going to be closish to that number, probably not more than three times that number. The cost on a thousand, they would be charged two seventy-nine a month.
Yeah, so it's based on the total of the building, not each individual unit. I remember, and Crystal couldn't correct me, but we'll bill the landlord or the owner
Build the landlord, okay.
Entire building.
Okay.
Not each individual.
Right, yeah, the way it's set up in the, in twelve point three oh, the one that enacts the transportation utility fee, is the property owner is responsible to pay.
Okay.
So.
Still, doesn't pass it on either way.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, though, then, what the tot, like, let's say we have a two hundred one, and I, I want to see what that total would be. So I can actually think about what that might look like for breaking it down for recouping costs, right?
I think if I could add to something that, because I did have a question, because I live in one of those multifamily units, we have townhomes. But we're in a private community. And I've mentioned, we don't get a lot of services from the city of South Salt Lake. Once we come out of our gate, it then becomes city, city streets, but we have the signs that tells us we're a private community. We pay our fees at our community as well under H O A fees. So we pay for, we're already charged for our parking fees already. We're already given like parking tags that we have to put in our housing to put in our vehicles, and now we have this added to it. So when we don't receive any billing, our bills from the city, how is that going to work for those private places? Because we don't get anything from the city. We get, we pay the property tax. We pay our property taxes.
So I believe it's going to the H O A for each of those units in there would be billed for the transportation utility fee.
So with HOAs, how do you, how are you going to reach out to them? Because not knowing, like, we don't have onsite H O A or even property managers onsite.
I'm assuming now we'd send a utility bill to them, and so we would go through that same channel.
And, and for all, we've already sent out information about this in, in utility bills last month, I believe. So that people were, this is giving the, the beginning of July, so that people were aware that this was going to be discussed tonight and had a chance to. They were told that they could come and discuss it in the other comment section. So that's how the information would continue to be pushed out, would be through the utility bills.
So I guess that's the other part of it is us being in H O A, we don't get anything, we don't get information passed down from that. So people in our community would see that and wonder why we're paying, I mean, it's two dollars and seventy-nine cents is probably, it's nothing. But like what Charlotte says, to some people, it is a lot. So how do you capture that? Because now, when I'm hearing this now, because I'm a part of that, so you know, I could pass along that information, but that information should really come down from the H O A. So that's the other part is, how many, so I guess that was a good question, is how many of those units? And how many of those fifty-plus units are private communities? And how are they being captured on those things there?
I think it would help to know for me, the number of properties that we have and what that would do to the fund. Because if the fund is a, like a mechanism to raise money for roads which benefits everybody, right? I'm curious what exempting those properties would also do to the fund and where we'd have to pull money from other sources to build and maintain the roads. I wouldn't want to blindly exempt certain properties and not others without knowing the impact to the fund.
Yeah, well, maybe the solution is.
I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar difference if you wanted to exempt that that category as well.
Okay.
It's three sixty. I just pulled up Cody's presentation.
Three sixty to exempt all residential.
Residential.
But if you include the multifamily that we've talked about, there would be about a difference of two hundred and fifteen.
That's the lion's share.
Yeah.
I, I'm wondering if maybe we bump it up to the one hundred for a compromise, like have a little, a property with a little bit more of the use. And I see what you're saying, Clarissa, you know, the townhome HOAs typically, I don't, I can't think of any that have over a hundred. So I don't think that would impact, but maybe I'm wrong. But no matter if you pay your H O A, which is paying for your roads and everything inside of your development, those people are still, those residents are still driving on our city streets, right?
And then that's kind of, and I do understand that part because we maintain our streets, the, the small tiny streets we have in our community. But then also, right outside, you do have homes. And then, so I guess that's the other part of that is the homes that have bed and breakfast too, because they end up bringing people in a lot more people on that. How does that get impacted there? Because we, you know, you end up having a lot of people who bring in that street that come in too. Because on my street alone, now we probably have now three short-term rentals on there. And at any given time, there can be at least three or four cars parked there.
Would that be billed as a business, Josh?
Yeah, they would, they would be paying for a business license and other things that would try to capture some of those fees.
I think the reality is, as this discussion is built out, we're going to see that there's a lot of different things that we could, or a lot of rabbit holes that we could probably go down and say, like, what about this, what about this? So I mean, obviously, you know, your prerogative, how detailed and how much you want to go into it. And if that's the compromise, you know, Sharla, that you recommended a hundred, you know, that's an easy tweak from a drafting standpoint. It's just a question of what you want to do policy-wise.
I think generally I'm supportive of the framework, and I'm generally supportive of the rate. I'm a little apprehensive when it comes to residential units. I could be persuaded because I know it's taking advantage of a fund in a way that benefits the entire city. Because you're going to pull the money from somewhere anyway, and this is a more beneficial mechanism. How? I mean, I, I could be persuaded to just vote right now. But how easy is it to amend the rate schedule? Or would you rather wait if we did need additional information on impacts of the fund? And how many residential units we have over a hundred, et cetera?
So I just pulled a quick and dirty report, so I can give you an estimate, not an exact number right now. But we have a hundred and ninety-four landlords that we build that are triplex or larger. Included in that is between twenty and forty you, buildings that are fifty or larger. So it's not a huge number.
Between twenty and forty, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just trying to do math, which was hard for me today because my brain's kind of done. But like, so if you're, let's say, I want to make sure I'm right about this. So if your apartment is, say, a thousand square feet, right, like, and there's, so then they would just be paying the two seventy-nine a month. The property owner
Yeah.
for each of those units.
Essentially, that's how it would break down, right? I mean, but again, you're billing the landlord, the property owner, based on the total square footage, as Craig pointed out. It's total square footage. So if, yeah, it broke down that you had fifty that happened to be a thousand square feet each, you know, yeah, for the easy math of it, right? Like, there you go. That's what you're paying is, is that rate per, because the way the study took into account residential, they broke it down as a dwelling unit is a thousand square feet.
It's the square footage of the actual building?
For, sorry, for what?
Um, it's the square footage of the, is it the building? Yes, the building. And I'd also like to point out that we've structured this in a similar way to what we did for Stormwater. And where it's billed to the landlord or the H O A, they're already used to seeing certain fees go to that level, and then the landlord making a decision whether they include that into their own cost or they pass it on. However, the landlord decides to do that, but it's not an unfamiliar process for them because we've had the Stormwater fee for a couple of years now.
So the total projection for fifty-plus units was two hundred and fifteen thousand out of the three sixty for all residential, but minusing the other two categories, it would be two fifteen. And then what was the total projection for this fund that we would expect? Including all the other categories?
Yeah, it was around six million dollars a year.
Six million? So we're talking the total of six million, including the two fifteen? Or it would be just shy of six million if we exclude these.
Yeah, it would include.
And the numbers we got were that if you excluded every residential unit, then it, you reduce that total by three hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
So then, if you look at all the multifamily, the number we got was, if you, sorry, let me think of this, include that, and it's a hundred and forty-five thousand down from the six million, right? That's where that two fifteen comes in.
Okay.
So it's the difference between the, no residential being charged and some residential being charged. That's just a rough estimate, obviously.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, obviously, I don't know the exact numbers, but that's from our consultant. That's the information we got was, if you're including multifamily, then looking at reducing it by a hundred and forty-five thousand because you're still exempting that other part of the residential. But if you exempt all residential, then you're reducing that by three hundred and sixty, so that's what two hundred and fifteen number comes from.
Okay.
But that timeline, the, what we looked at where they had the amounts with what we would need, right? That was based on no residential originally in the presentation, correct?
Yes. And certainly, that's, you know, something that the council could continue to do was to say residential means, you know, any residential unit, whatever, however we define that. And so we would just have to make that change from a drafting standpoint. And then just simply change that box to only say residential instead of the three different lines.
Yeah. Curious to know what you guys think. I don't know.
Personally, for me, like, I don't, I don't think we should charge the residential. And if we do, it should be a hundred units and above.
Okay.
I agree with Nick. I think that minimum of a hundred units, fifty is a really small complex. I don't know of very, very many
I
that are fifty and small.
Just, I don't know the number of a hundred-plus units. I'm guessing it's not a lot, but we're probably talking less than a hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we'd be collecting if the fifty-plus is two hundred and fifteen. I don't know the number of hundred-plus, but we're not talking a lot of money that would be collecting. So for me, I'm like, if we're not collecting a lot of money from those units, is it worth charging them and not the others?
I, I don't think, I don't think it's worth it personally. That's.
Well, if I did the calculations for our community, we have at least sixty-nine, seventy units. So a year, we would be paying the city two thousand five hundred and eleven dollars a year. But over, over time, as it goes up, That could increase whatever percentage we were talking about, and I, I, if I remember this correctly, we initially started this for the. To understand, because a lot of industrial locations. Because I thought that was originally what this whole thing was, as we talked about, I know we did talk about how we use the roads and I, and I.
The chart was, there was, there's no proposed increase.
Okay.
Over time.
Okay, so then, yeah, and I think that's.
That was a different fund, that was, yeah.
And I think what that chart was showing was the cost, if you wait, deferred maintenance. The cost goes up.
Yeah.
For maintenance as opposed to the constant steady, right, that's what the difference was in that chart.
I mean theoretically, a hundred plus units is probably more of our transit overlay areas where theoretically they're taking more. Like tracks and that type of transportation too.
Honestly, the more we talk about this. I personally just wanna proceed for now, and we can always circle back to this, right? But for now, I wanna just proceed with our original plan of excluding residents.
I'd be supportive of that.
Uh, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I. My uh, HOA is a hundred and fifty units, so I think it's gonna affect more people than you think, so I'm, I'm with the. With everybody that exclude the residential. I, I just, I just feel like if, if you're, if you're including one, one hundred or over. And you're not including one hundred or less, like there's gonna be residents that are gonna get upset over this, this, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm with Charlotte, yeah.
So.
Can we vote by amending? Or is that cleaner?
If you want to do that, um. Then your, your motion would need to be very clear. That it would be all residential units that are exempted, um, and then what I would do is go back and. That draft, so that when it was formally put into the code, it would be. Reflecting your um, statement, uh, or the alternative is to push it to August. But I'm comfortable if that's what you wanna do is vote on it tonight, as long as your motion is very clear about what your intent is.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I think the first one is just for the framework, right, so we're, we're good, okay.
The framework doesn't have to be changed, or does it?
Uh, well, the definition will have to change because uh, what you brought up before, um, of what a residential user is. Um, and so we'll just have to make that change. That residential, all residential be exempted, including all multifamily.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, if you're okay.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council enacting chapter twelve dot three zero. Uh, the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code creating a transportation utility, implementing transportation utility fees. And establishing a transportation utility enterprise fund with the correction that residential means. Any owner or resident of any unit will be excluded.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Charlotte, a second by Ray, we will go to roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 Yeah, we'll make those changes um, before it gets published in the code, but it's clear enough, so we can sign everything tonight.
Great, move on to item number two, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three. Point one, one point one zero zero of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to set the rate for the transportation utility fees. Correct.
In the presentation, I showed you the chart amending that section of the code, um, so. I'm assuming we'll have to the same.
Yeah, you could just make the same motion that the chart will just reflect the word residential, right? Is, is we'll just correct it that way, so that it will say the one line, if you pull that chart back up, if you look at it, it will just say residential, zero dollars.
Yeah, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three point eleven point one hundred of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code. To set the rate for the transportation utility fees with the correction. That no residential, including multifamily, will have a monthly rate per one thousand square feet. Second.
Got a, a motion by Charlotte, a second by Clarissa, roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 An ordinance of South Salt Lake City Council amending section three point eleven point zero seven zero of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code. To modify police department fees. We have Aretha, Aretha's gonna.
Good evening, Aretha Edwards, South Salt Lake Police Department, Records Supervisor. Um, I'm here in connection to our prior request to amend or modify the PD records fees. We did discuss it um, on Wednesday, July ninth. Just wanted to know where you guys were, what you thought in that regard.
Hey, yeah, we did talk about this last time, any other discussion?
No concerns for me.
Entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
I'll entertain a motion that we adopt an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three dot eleven dot zero seven zero of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code. To modify police department fees.
I'll second.
We got a, a motion by Ray, a second by Nick, uh, roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on to item number four, an ordinance of. Uh, the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three point eleven point zero two zero of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code. To modify general fees and aerial. We discussed this as well last meeting.
Yeah, we discussed this last time, um, it's just uh, in the general fees of the consolidated fee schedule and just, um. So we're able to add uh, those USB and then just consolidating it down to just media devices in general will be fifteen dollars for that. If you have any questions.
Any discussion or questions?
No.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the order, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section three point eleven point zero two zero. The South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify general fees.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Nick, a second by Charlotte, we'll start with roll call, Paul.
Yes.
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 On to item, item number six, or no, we're on five, right? An ordinance of Salt, South Salt Lake City Council amending three. Uh, point eleven point zero six zero of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify city recorder fees and aerial.
Yes, and we discussed this at the last meeting as well, um, this just allows, uh, adds a. Fifty dollar, uh, twenty-four hour late filing note, uh, fee for campaign finance reports. This is allowed by state law, so we're just adding it into our consolidated fee schedule, um, and then also just changing uh, the. Rate for the per page for grandma requests to twenty-five cents instead of ten.
Excellent, okay, I'll enter, any discussion? No, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion uh, to approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending section. Three point eleven point zero six zero of the South Salt Lake Municipal Code to modify city recorders fees. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Cora, I mean Cory, sorry Cory, and uh, second by Clarissa. Um, start with roll call, Paul?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. And we will move on to item six, a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council amending the South Salt Lake General Plan. Twenty forty to adopt the twenty twenty-five updated moderate income housing plan. And we have Steve Lyon here to present.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, this is an item that we had on the work session on July ninth, on July tenth, we went before the planning commission and presented this also. And came out of that with a favorable recommendation, um, just wanted to come before you and see if you had any further questions, if we need to go through the presentation again, or what you needed. This is just simply updating the two elements that were adding to, to the modern income housing plan, which is due in about a week to the state. And then uh, moving the resolution forward for that.
Okay, yeah, and we did discuss this last week, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adopt a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council amending the South Salt Lake General Plan twenty forty to adopt the twenty twenty-five updated moderate. Income housing plan. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by S- Charlotte, a second by Clarissa, um, we'll start with Paul, roll call.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you, Steve. We'll move on to item number seven, a resolution in support of equipment financing for the lease of a fire department velocity pumper, and we have Chief Addison here. He spoke on this in the meeting.
Terry Addison, the Fire Chief for the city, just a quick recap from the uh, work meeting, in case you're just tuning in, this isn't. This resolution is in support of leasing a new fire pumper apparatus. Our apparatus stays frontline for about eight years. Uh, there's anywhere from a three year to uh, thirty, uh, thirty month to thirty-six month. Uh, build time on these vehicles now, so allowing us to enter into this lease. Actually end up saving the city about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Great, thank you. And we did talk about this, any other discussion?
Question, what do we do with the vehicle after its eighteen year lifespan?
Then it goes into surplus, we'll either uh, sell it to a volunteer fire department, we'll send it to surplus, and we had. A fire engine that was thirty years old that we're still using as reserve, which we donated to Granite School District's Fire Cadet Program.
Thank you.
Any other? No, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution in support of equipment financing for the lease of fire department velocity pumper.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Clarissa, a second by Ray, a roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending sections. Seventeen point zero three point zero one zero, um, seventeen point zero three point one three zero. As listed on the agenda, there's a few more of the South Salt Lake Municipal Code to create the city facility. Overlay land use district and to update land use design standards and plating and subdivision requirements for the new CF overlay land use district.
Great, thank you, um, good evening, council, uh, Spencer Colley, Senior Planner. Uh, this first ordinance that I have before you this evening is the creation of the city facility overlay. Uh, we were at the last um, city council meeting, uh, the work meeting and provided an update there. Um, and the, the, the July tenth, planning commission meeting, um, the planning commission reviewed the ordinance. And pro- and forwarded a unanimous positive recommendation for council's consideration this evening, um, just a really quick overview. Um, the overlay is, uh, it, it mimics existing um, city facility district, the only difference is that there is. Uh, anytime that an overlay is placed for a city facility, it's for the duration of the use only. So that once the city facility use is removed, it reverts back to its original um, zoning. Um, and so that is um, the ordinance as before you.
Thank you, Spencer, yes, we talked about this, does anyone have any questions for Spencer? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve number eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Charlotte, a second by, by Clarissa, roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, Spencer's staying here to talk about um, item number nine, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council to amend the South. Salt Lake zoning map to include the city facility overlay for the parcel located at three two nine one south, nine hundred west, South Salt Lake.
Great, thank you, yes, this ordinance is now to apply the city facility overlay to the property at thirty-two ninety-one south, nine hundred west. Um, the city is leasing this property uh, for relocation of storage and fleet vehicles uh, as the public works campus begins. Um, construction, um, this does not, um. Uh, the, the, this actual, this location, again, this will revert back to its original zoning. Once the use is terminated, um, this was before you at the last planning, uh, city council meeting and then at the planning commission meeting last week. And they forwarded a unanimous positive recommendation as well.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the City of South Salt Lake City Council to amend the South Salt Lake. Zoning map to include the city facility overlay for the parcel located at thirty-two ninety-one south, nine hundred west, South Salt Lake City, Utah.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Clarissa, a second by Cory, we moved a roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 Okay, and last one, um, is. Item number ten, an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending chapter seventeen oh three. Of the South Salt Lake Municipal Code to amend and update the commercial neighborhood land use district. And Spencer will talk about that too.
Yes, um, this was uh, before the planning commission in June, June nineteenth, um, they are forwarding a positive recommendation. Um, and Eliza brought this to the last uh, city council meeting. Um, but just as a reminder, this is to uh, reduce the minimum lot requirement in the commercial neighborhood zone, which is currently half acre. Reducing it to a quarter acre, um, this is to a, a facilitate uh, redevelopment within the area, which has not seen any construction since two thousand and seven.
Great, thank you, any questions for Spencer? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending chapter seventeen point zero three of the South Salt Lake. Municipal Code to amend and update the commercial neighborhood land use district.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Clarissa, a second by Cory, roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
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 Okay, excellent, thank you, Spencer. All right, well, we have one item under new business. And it's a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County. Regarding conveyance of property from the county to the city of South Salt Lake, and our attorney's gonna talk about that.
Thanks, yeah, just briefly, I think you're all aware that the county transferred land on Tenth West to the city. Uh, for the purpose of building a police station or some type of law enforcement facility. Was the limitation uh, of the transfer, this formalizes that, but because it includes a transfer of property. Um, real property, the council is required to give approval to that. Otherwise, the mayor could have just authorized it, cause it's a contract, but by state law, the council is required to weigh in when there's a prop- uh, real property transfer.
And is there a, a rush on this, or can we?
No, no rush, it was just an item uh, that needs to be approved by the council, so we thought we'd put it on here, so that you could consider it, if you had questions. You wanna discuss um, anything, I, I know the, the mayor's been involved in that, obviously, but. Um, you know, she attended the county council, uh, when they deeded the property over and approved that, um. The county has signed this, there's, there's no rush on our end.
No, I just add the only caveat that was put on it, that we break ground within five years. And that it is strictly for law enforcement purposes.
Okay, thank you, any questions for?
Just a question on the property, is there any access to the rear of the property that would abut the trail?
We're currently working to get uh, um, access from easement, access from the county, they have that. The myth, the piece that we would need to be able to access the trail.
Okay.
I have a quick question, is, if it's just specifically for law enforcement, could it have included any public safety, like possibly a thinking? A fire department at some point could be a good location.
It's not large enough to support, like. To, to, yeah, it wouldn't support, and Station Forty-two is across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions? I'll make a motion that we move this resolution to our next regular scheduled meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ray, a second by Clarissa, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now we are at the end and get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Cory made a motion to adjourn, Clarissa second, all in favor?
Yes.